Welcome to the November 8, 2021 meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowoselski. Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo. Here, Councilor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Sambudo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 25, 2021. Calendar item number three, the Revere City Council awarded certificates of commendation to the Patriots for winning the 2021 Revere Youth Girls Softball Championship.
We're fighting over who says something first.
I know. We're so eager to say something and congratulate all you ladies.
Get my water out of your way. I already spilled some, for Christ's sake.
Okay, welcome. Hopefully I don't break the mic. So we're here to welcome the Patriots tonight. And it's wonderful that all of you came here for the Patriots this evening. You must have seen an amazing run. But what I want to say is, Revere Youth Baseball and Softball does a phenomenal job each year putting together baseball, T-ball, softball, senior softball. And we like to award and reward these young ladies and gentlemen that come up here. And, you know, not just for being successful, but for participating and doing something on a positive note. But I also want to make sure that we recognize there are some of the people that are here with them. Most of them, it's their parents or their coaches or their mentors. And the amount of time and dedication that it takes for you to be able to put into your children and have a positive impact on their lives. So first and foremost, and I know Steve is going to say some words about his good friend, but also my good friend, is Coach Corey. As you may know, I've coached down there for many years as well. Corey was coaching before her kids were playing. That's dedication. That takes a lot, to be able to go down there and do it, not just for your child, but to do it for someone else's. Corey's made an impact on so many young girls, mostly young girls' lives in the softball world in Revere over the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years. I know that it came and it started with her family and her passion for the game, being down there with the snack stand, but also being down there as a coach and a mentor. It's been super important. So again, I really want to thank the parents that came out here because I know that you had to take your kids out. You had to spend the money to get them cleats and gloves. And you had to bring them out there on the cold days and on the hot days, Miss Family Barbecues, to get them to play a sport that I love. My daughter plays now in college. She played at St. Mary's. But this is such an awesome sport. So I hope that you kids can really appreciate and thank your parents and your mentors. And I wanted to say congratulations. This is such an awesome sport. Please stick with it. And I hope, and I hope, some of you girls, young ladies, had to Revere High School to help continue to support their success at their school. Okay? So congratulations and thank you so much.
So I guess Corey assumes I'm going to say something nice about her.
No.
But Corey's actually been teaching for 25, coaching for 25 years. So let's give her a round of applause. So I had Patrick Keefe touch upon the more personal part of this. I want to share something with you. So women have been fighting inequality for, over the past history. Their involvement in sports have almost been nonexistent in the 20th century. I want to share some of the inequities that women faced. Here are some of them. So women were not allowed to vote. They were not allowed to practice law. They could not get a credit card. Women were not allowed to wear pants. They could not go shopping without an escort. They were not allowed to compete or even watch the Olympic Games. They were not even allowed to run the Boston Marathon. And did you know the sneakers you girls are wearing? They didn't make sneakers specific to women until the 1980s. So these are some of the things that we forget in the past. And one thing history has taught us is that women can make change. And women have changed history. So for the history changers of the past, they paved the way for all of you to have fun, to live life. So the lessons you learn playing sports as a team, the self-discipline, the dedication, not only will it help your game, it's going to help you succeed in life. And that's what took you to the championship. And that's what made you win. Dedication and determination. So I applaud each and every one of you. I applaud the coaches, the parents for taking the time to bring them and getting them involved. Because not only are sports good physically for the child, it's proven that they're good mentally. So we need to get childrens more involved. One thing I want to state is, in 1972, they passed Title IX, a law, civil rights amendment, that schools offer that girls equal opportunity. So within two years of passing Title IX, 300,000 girls played sports in high schools. Within two years after that, 1.3 million girls played sports in high school. In 2018 to 2019 school year, according to the National Association of High School, 3.4 million girls participated in sports in high school. So that's just in high school, not considered private organizations. So that's big progress. And so, girls, everything you do, whatever game you play, keep that in mind. Someone paved the way for you. And they paved it away. And you will continue to pave that path and continue to change history. So congratulations. Assistant Coach Colleen Forden.
She's not here.
She's not here.
Thank you.
And she's been doing it. She has done a remarkable job coaching as well. I don't know this person. Corey O... Is it McNeil? Corey O'Neill. There we go. Okay. Jenna Yelmokis, did I say it correct? Ava Teabaggy, did I say it right? Kaylee Surgeons. Valentina Ramos. Gabriela Paladoro. Chloe O'Neill. Zizzi Kalivas. Callie Joyce. Gianna Chodi. Melania Badalantlini. And Kayla Abdu... Abduali. Wait, wait. Abduali. Did that... Is that everyone? Yeah, I think that's everyone. And that's everyone. Congratulations, everyone.
Mr. President, suspension of rules. All in favor, all opposed? So audit.
Taking up calendar items number 40 and 44. Calendar item number 40 is a communication from the Election Commissioner requesting approval of the in-person early voting schedule.
Ms. Kallala.
Diane Kallala, Election Commissioner, City of Revere. First, I wanted to just apologize for my absence during the reading of the warrant or the approval of the warrant. So I'm sorry. I just, well, I really am sorry I wasn't here. I just felt ill and couldn't make it. But in any case, thank you for approving it. And so I'm here tonight to ask for early voting for the December 14 special state primary. And it would be from December 4 to December 10, from 9:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. And it would be located at St. Anthony's Church. So I respectfully request your approval of those hours and the location.
Under roll.
Shall the City Council approve the early voting schedule for the special state primary on Tuesday, December 14 in accordance with Chapter 255 of the Acts of 2020 as amended by Chapter 5 of the Acts of 2021? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Sambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the early voting schedule has been approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. President.
Before you leave, Diane, can I ask you a question, please?
Sure, sure.
So I was down holding signs at the Beauchemin School during the election. And a lot of people didn't know that it was in the gymnasium. Is there any way that the next vote, we can have more signage down there? Because that's a big parking lot. And a lot of people were going into the gymnasium. They, not the gymnasium, the auditorium instead of the gymnasium. So can we have some, you know, in the beginning of...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
When I arrived to check on things on Election Day, I did see signs that were out in front of the gymnasium. And just to let you know, we put it in every media outlet possible, from the Journal, the Advocate, cable. But I will make sure, if there's still confusion, I understand that. And I will make sure that...
When you enter the parking lot, you could direct people, like there could be signage there that could direct people to the gymnasium.
Absolutely.
And there was nothing. People were parking and coming up and saying, where do we vote? Where do we vote?
Okay, and I agree with you. But I can tell you that when I went there, probably sometime in the morning, so maybe the sign shifted or someone changed them. But there were signs out in front of the gymnasium. But I will do a better job for the December 14 election.
There were plenty of signs on the gymnasium. I'm talking about when you're entering the parking lot.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
I will make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, through you to Diane. Diane, don't run away. If I may. Councilor Nowoselski. Diane, two things.
Sure.
First of all, when I was down the Garfield, there were a lot of people that came down and did not realize that the voting was changed. And they had to go all the way back up to Walnut Ave.
Those voters were sent postcards informing them of the change. And again, it was in all, it was on Facebook, Advocate Journal. We had signs posted at all the different locations. And I don't know where the confusion lies with voters not realizing where, when their polling location was changed. But we do notify them and we do send them postcards.
I did say that to them.
Sure.
A lot of them said they never got them. Now, whether it was the mail, I don't know. But just so you know.
And we did reverse 911 calls to...
Yeah, but they didn't, they weren't specific on locations.
Okay.
The second thing is, why are we having problem getting people to work at the polls?
I don't know.
I feel bad for the people that were working at the polls that had to do double and triple duty.
Well, I didn't find that in any case, that they had to do double and triple duty. We had, I had a worker for each spot. And in fact, I went to the high school and I asked for some students there. So we got them trained and that should have been fine. I mean, I had enough people to cover the election, but I always need more people.
Unless people didn't show up. You know, because down in Garfield, when I was in Walnut Ave, I was there and there were people said, well, wait a minute, I got to go in back and do the checkout along with the check-in. Now, if it was that time or the person came in late, I don't know.
It could have been for lunch hour. We did at Calhymon Towers.
It wasn't lunch hour.
Okay. I can tell you, I came in on a Saturday and I called over 300 poll workers to confirm their attendance on Election Day. And I know one man at Calhymon Towers wasn't feeling well. He left early. So that could have been what you were experiencing. But I also think that my replacement, when he becomes on board, he should have a meeting with all of the councilors and set some ground rules for Election Day. Because I find the same things that you find. I get just as frustrated with candidates hanging around polling places, with the candidates' workers parking so close to the polling location that there are no parking spaces for the voters. And then the voter will come in the next day and yell at us. I had no, I had to go three times around, couldn't find... So there is a lot of frustration, I think, on both sides. And I think a meeting should be had in these council chambers for the next local election. And I'm sure it won't be me having that meeting. But I hope that my, I will give all of this information to my replacement and they can have the meeting.
Good, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Council Rotundo, you got to stick there, Diane.
I'm here for the duration.
I guess first and foremost, thank you. Because I know it's a tough job that you do. And if I'm not mistaken, when is the Senate race again?
December 14 and January 11.
And the only person running for the city of Revere is Anthony D'Ambrogio, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a Republican from Winthrop and Lydia Edwards from, Democrat from Boston.
Council Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the Election Commissioner. I was going to contact you separately on this, but since you're before us, I figured I might as well bring it up. So on Election Day, a gentleman approached me, you know, in Ward 6, we have 61 and 62, and the gym, and 63 is in the cafeteria of the Whalen School. He lived on a street and in a numbered house where he got bounced around from the gym back to the cafeteria, from the gym to the cafeteria because they told him that he was in 63. He went down to 63 and then was bounced back upstairs to the gym. And he was just very frustrated. So two things, two questions, if I may. If we could consider consolidating 1, 2, and 3 and place them all in the gymnasium, I think there, and I've spoken with a few people, I think there is plenty of room for having Precinct 3 in the Gym of the Whalen as well. Either that or in past elections, there were always poster boards with street listings right at the entrance and the street numbers. And I don't believe they were there on Tuesday. So moving forward, if we could either do one or both of those to try to, you know, make sure there's less confusion, that would be appreciated.
Okay, and if I could just offer an explanation for that? I agree that that's what happened, but I find it very... We provide street indexes for the staff to look up. And they're advised that if you can't find a person on the voting list, to call the office and we will direct them to don't just send a voter around like that. But aside from that, all of my best workers are at that polling place because there's so many, it's so heavily visited. A lot of voters vote there. So I wished at some point somebody'd call the office. But I will look into moving, we would probably do it after the January election. We could put 63 up in the front as well. And I'm sorry that that happened to that voter.
I know, we got, councils need to speak. Council Powers.
We should have an election wrap-up, too. I hate to say it.
Let's try to be brief.
My replacement would love to hear all of this stuff.
Excuse me, Diane.
Sure, sir.
You mentioned that the early voting will be at the St. Anthony's Hall. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's the only place in the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay, when the advertisements are made in the local paper, all of the other precincts will be operating?
Okay.
Not for early voting, for the election?
On December 14?
Yeah.
All of the election, all of the other sites will be open. And as an aside, we're mailing an absentee ballot application to every registered voter in the city of Revere. We're hoping that that goes out this Friday. So anyone who is unable to get to St. Anthony's Church, they can vote by mail.
Yeah, I just want to, I just don't want to have any confusion on Election Day with people thinking that they go to St. Anthony's Church.
No, that's, I, no, I haven't heard that that happens because we've had early voting at St. Anthony's Church on previous occasions. And everybody knows that if they don't go to St. Anthony's for early voting, they have to go to the polling place on Election Day.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Council Vice President Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I love this. I can't even tell you how much I love this.
I'm just going to end on a good note.
Okay.
Diane, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
You are going to be missed.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, baby.
Thank you for your time.
Calendar item number 44, communication from the mayor relative to the 2021 proposed ward and precinct map.
Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. I'll be pretty brief here. On behalf of the mayor, I'm here to present the proposed updated ward and precinct maps resulting from the new census. The process the city went through to create this proposed map started back in April. Our most recent online poll asking for feedback on a set of maps received nearly 150 responses. As you know, recent census data shows that Revere was one of the fastest-growing cities in the state. And Revere also shifted from a population that was 62% non-Hispanic white in 2010 to 45% non-Hispanic white in 2020. That is a pretty significant shift. In our process, we found ourselves working within several goals and limitations. By law, we are required to ensure that every ward and precinct is sized within 5% of the average total population across all wards and precincts. So we were required to reduce the existing Ward 2 by nearly 900 people. And while Ward 6 needed to grow by about 500 people. Those, these were considerations. Those were the, those wards were the biggest outliers in the city. Also, by federal law, race and ethnicity cannot be the only factor, nor can it be the predominant factor in deciding boundaries. But federal law also is clear that we may not dilute minority voter strength nor pack communities of color in Revere Ward boundaries. These were also considerations in our process. The state legislature made it a goal to build opportunity districts in redrawing of state legislative boundaries to match majority community of color districts more closely with actual BIPOC populations of the state. We modeled our process from the states. Given the change in Revere's population, our proposed end result provides four of the six wards with a population that is majority community of color. In addition, as the state legislature drew the new boundary between the 16th and 19th Suffolk districts, we were constrained in our redrawing, especially of Ward 2. The Ward 2 councillor has expressed his concerns to me. And I'm sure that more discussion about this will be forthcoming in committee hearings. The last big change I want to flag is the shift in Wards 3 and 5. We heard feedback from residents, oh, sorry, that stretches, we heard feedback from residents that Ward 5 was not logical. The existing Ward 5 stretches and winds through much of the north-south length of the city. And as such, we are proposing a more consistent geographic boundary that more or less flips the existing Ward 5 precinct 3 with the existing Ward 3 precinct 3 to create a more logical and easier-to-manage territory. This would be easier for voting, easier for candidates, and maintain a more consistent set of community interests within one voting district. With that as introduction, I want to thank the Committee of City Staff and consultants who assisted with this. And then my remarks for now, pending deeper discussion at committee. Thanks for your time, councilors.
Thank you. So this is going to go to the committee as a whole for two public hearings. Monday, November 15 at 4:00 p.m. and Thursday, November 18 at 6:00 p.m. Back to the regular order of business.
Public hearings, calendar item number four. Hearing called is ordered on the following in ordinance amending metered rates of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere.
Proponents, people in favor. Name and address for the record, please. Press the button. There you go.
Okay. 7076 Sumner Street, Revere, Mass.
So what's your name, dear?
Annette Gold, my husband Marvin Gold.
Thank you.
And we were here a few weeks back. And we discussed that we are owner-occupied. That premises, we bought the house in '64. And we are living there. It's going to be 64 years. That's how long we're married. And we paid residential water all those years. And just since July, we were converted to commercial. And we felt it was unfair. And we were here and we spoke to some of the councilors. And I understood at the time that you guys were in favor of changing the owner-occupied, even though it's a four-family or a six-family. There aren't too many living landlords in our area. And I have good tenants. I worked with them during COVID. And no one was left out in the cold. So I'm asking to be converted back to residential water. And... So I'm asking to be converted back to residential water, and, uh, do it as soon as possible. I just got my water bill. So that's all I have to say.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. We're in the middle of a, we're in the middle of a public hearing. State your point.
I wanna recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm gonna go up and speak in favor.
Counselor Nowosowski is, uh, recused.
Okay, uh, can I just ask a question?
Go right ahead.
I know you have meetings, I don't know how it all works, but how long does it take before you decide?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna get through this public hearing, we'll explain to you afterwards, uh, how long it'll take. Thank you. Any more proponents, proponents? Name an address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, Ira Nowosowski, fifty-three, Dehone Street. Just wanna let everybody know I am affected by this, uh, through my home, uh, and I have to recuse myself in, uh, relation to the Ethics Commission. I cannot speak from the council floor as a counselor, and I cannot speak as a landlord, according to Mass General laws. I can't speak as a tenant. And, uh, as a tenant of fifty-three Dehone Street, and what would hap, what's happening here is, uh, the landlord has to increase the rent because of the water bill going up, you know, and the, the, he has been a residential rate for ninety years, as long as the water's been in effect. And now all of a sudden, in two thousand and eighteen, when this council passed the water rates, not realizing what was going on, now these four-family and six-family owner-occupied buildings now have to go commercial. And it is not fair. You know, it's not fair not only to the landlords, but it's also not for, fair to the tenants. And I would also ask, as a tenant, and I've been, you know, I've been paying my rent based on the higher rate, that when you make your decision, whether it's a four or a six, that you make owner-occupied, that this be made effective July first, when the rate started going higher, and give these landlords a credit, not a payback, a credit towards future water bills, so the city doesn't have to pay out checks, and these, uh, landlords will be, uh, reimbursed, uh, to a point. So I hope you pass this, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, coun, uh, thank you, Mr. Nowosowski. Any other proponents? Mr. CFO.
Good evening, counsel, Richard Viskey, CFO, um, twenty-one Broadway. Um, I'm not here to speak necessarily as a proponent or an opponent, but I just wanted to do a little, um, presentation, I just let you know, um, what this may mean. We did some, um, work in our-
I gotta stop you for a second. I gotta get through the hearing first. I gotta go proponents, opponents, then if you wanna offer a presentation after that, I'll let you do it.
Oh, all right, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, we gotta kinda follow the rules.
It's not really a presentation, just some information that I thought would be helpful, but I'll wait till the end.
We'll, we'll, we'll have that right after the, don't go away. Don't go away. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, close that side of the hearing, any opponents? People opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. City councilors. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as you know, uh, this was an ordinance change that I had requested, uh, based on some of the feedback from the residents getting that sticker shock just a few months back. So I know that, um, that Mr. Viskey is here to give us the breakdown. This isn't by no stretch of the imagination gonna break the bank for the city of Revere. Um, it's, it's, the owner occupants, uh, Mr. Viskey has them here, it's a very minute amount of, uh, group, and the last thing we wanna do is tax our residents, whether it's water bills or taxes, uh, to the point where they can't afford it. We have residents like we've just heard from, that were able to be flexible to their resident, to the, to their tenants, not a victim during COVID, not raise the rates. I know that many people were taking less rent, uh, to try to be amicable to their tenants, so I'd like to hear what, uh, Mr. Viskey has to say on what about, what this might equate to, if in fact they have, uh, the owner occupants correctly on file. Mr. Viskey?
No, not yet.
No?
No, after the city council speaks-
Sounds good.
-Mr. Viskey will come.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Serino was first. Okay, Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. Um, I believe it shouldn't just only be owner-occupied. In Revere, uh, people that live in four-unit buildings do get needed for their water. Matter of fact, I'm one of them. I live in a, a building that has full residential and a commercial unit, so this doesn't apply to me, and therefore the ethics issue does not apply. However, there are well over three hundred and fifty units that have four-plus that do apply. Are those tenants, those people that live there that have to pay their water bill, should they be not given the same deference that someone that owns a property? Do they not suffer the same economic consequences as someone who owns a property? I believe in a tiered system like they do in Malden, where you're basically, what you use is what you pay for. Here in the city of Revere, it's basically spread across the plethora and then individually billed. My aunt that lives in Revere, that owns a one-bedroom, and my aunt that lives in Malden that owns a one-bedroom, spends the difference between a thousand dollars in water in Revere. Whereas the tiered system in Malden, because she uses less water than somebody who has five children in the family, is paying a thousand dollars less than my aunt in Revere, and they grow the same tomatoes. So that's the better system, it's the more equitable system. It affects everybody, people who are needed and who are not.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm your next.
I agree, I'm sorry, um, we are driving people out of this city. Uh, people that have raised their kids here, have lived here all their lives, because the rents are high, the water's high, everything is high, and with all this building that we're doing in the city, it should be lowered. So I am gonna go, I support the owner occupancy, I believe that we should take care of our own, um, and I'm disgusted that this is even coming up in front of the council, because we have to take care of our people, our residents. And yes, okay, so if they're paying a hundred dollars more, okay, a hundred dollars more, but these are our residents, and we, and you know what? People are just saying, "Revere, see you later." We wanna keep our residents, so I, I'm totally in favor of the owner occupancy. Thank you.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the, the whole purpose in, in justification is owner-occupied. If we can hold that to six units or less in owner-occupied, I don't see why we can't do that as a community. That's, that's throwing out a bone to the residents who chose to live in our community, raise their children and families in our community, and it's the slightest amount that we could offer out. So I think any units of six or less owner-occupied would come into the residential rate, for sure. And, uh, and I think that that's only common sense. And in today's world, I don't know in numbers if Mr. Viskey is gonna come forward, that's my brother out there, too, I'll be out in a minute.
That's, that's your convenience.
He said they're moving along, yeah, counselor.
But, but the thing is, I, I solely believe that, that this is justification and, and the right thing to do for our, for our folks in our community, so I would be voting for owner-occupied, six units or less.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think there's, uh, no question that, uh, anybody that, uh, has a, a building in this city, four units, six units, they may have a couple of children in, uh, living in that building as, as families, uh, that should be a residential rate. Other than that, people that own buildings, four units, six units, or even more, live outside of the city, that's a commercial venture. There's no question about it, and they should be paying the commercial rate. People that live in the city, that live in that building, residential rate. Outside of that, commercial rate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor. Mr. Viskey? Oh, we got someone else?
Let me just-
Counselor Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is going back to-
Ways and Means.
Ways and Means, and, uh, zoning, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, correct.
Okay, um, you know, we-
No, it's just going to Ways and Means, I think.
Oh, it's coming to my-
But the zoning part of it's already been-
Okay, well, I, I will reserve my comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Viskey, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, Richard Viskey, twenty-one Broadway, CFO. Um, just quickly, uh, we balance the budget every year based upon assumed revenues that cover the expenses, so, um, for round, for round number purposes, this is about a thirty million dollar operation. Um, we collect thirty million dollars worth of revenues, and, and it pays for itself. So, that being said, um, we did a data dump and tried to narrow, um, owner-occupied units between four and eight units, because that's the data set that we have in our assessing records. There's about fifty-five different residents that we believe would qualify as that. Um, we simply took the usage over the past year, and we, um, put the residential rate to it, put the commercial rate to it, and the delta between the two is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So not a huge outweigh, but just remember that, that one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars will have to be generated, so that, those rates will be tweaked, maybe if, uh, if this is something for the two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year, we'll always have to realize that full, uh, amount of money to cover the cost. So, um, I think, though, the motion has, uh, plenty of merit. Uh, again, we classify four-to-eight unit buildings in our assessing records. If it's decided that eight's too many, and it's six or four, we'll certainly come up with a program to vet through and verify owner-occupies in, uh, in charge of the proper rates. But just to be clear to everybody out there and in the chamber, all we do here is follow the rules that have been ordained by this council, so it's not us making these rules or making these rates, we're just trying to apply, uh, the ordinance, so I'm happy to, happy to give any more information, so.
Blame the council, go ahead.
Uh, we propose and you dispose, right? That's the-
There you go, there you go.
Thank you. So, uh- You, Mr. President.
So I hope you can, I hope you come to the, uh, Ways and Means meeting to help.
I come to everyone.
I know you do.
All right, thank you. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions, if, uh, if not, I'll leave.
Go ahead, Counselor Rotundo.
God forbid, you know, so, wh, why don't we go to a tiered system, Rick? I mean, I've spoken to you about this before.
I didn't know you were gonna go down that road.
Well, no, no, I'm being serious, it's the most-
No, we'll, we'll discuss that in Ways and Means, we'll discuss that in Ways and Means. Ways and Means.
Mr. President?
It's your turn.
Mr. President?
They're not the president, sit down.
Can I? Can I make a motion?
Counselor Janino, go right ahead.
Thank you. Can I make a motion to suspend rules in order to take up calendar item twenty-one sixty-one? These men have to protect us tomorrow, it'll be up early.
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, all opposed? So we're on it.
Calendar item number nine, communication from firefighter Kevin O'Hara, president Local nine-two-six, requesting approval of the attached special legislation in act relative to reserve time of public safety personnel in the city of Revere.
Go right ahead, sir.
Right, thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to make sure we, we let the citizens of Revere know what's gonna take place tonight, so if you don't mind, I go into what I have.
Go right ahead.
All right, on December third, two thousand and nineteen, the Supreme Court Judicial Court issued a decision in the case of the Plymouth Retirement Board versus Crabbe and Parac four-eight-three Mass dot six-hundred, which concerned credible service for the period of time individuals spent on their eligible list for the as a reserve firefighter per Mass General Law thirty-two, section four-two-B. On February twentieth to twenty-twenty, this, the state public employee retirement administration commission issued Parac member eleven twenty-twenty interpreting SJC's ruling effect on Mass General Law thirty-two four-B. Let me remind you that this is Parac's interpretation of a rule, which was, which we believe is incorrect. During that ruling that took place, the credible service that was granted for time on Revere's reserve list reduced back to ten years, June thirtieth, two thousand and nine, which means for the past ten years, members made important life and financial decisions based on belief that they had this earned service time counting towards their retirement. Some of these members have lost up to five years, causing them not to reach their maximum years of service for full retirement benefits. It also increases their chances of getting career-ending disabilities such as heart lung disease, cancer, behavioral issues, and injury. Counselors, sixty-five members have been affected by this ruling. Passing this special legislation that I've submitted would bring this closer to help solving the problem in which Parac misinterpreted. A passing vote would complete the second step of reinstating any member who lost their time from June thirtieth, two thousand and nine, to February eleventh, two thousand and twenty. In closing, I'm asking the council to honor and support our request of a Home Rule Act to gun in the reserve time.
Mr. President.
Counsel, counsel, now, Counsel Vice President Visconti.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, this, uh, special legislation, uh, came in front of the, uh, Ways and Means Subcommittee this evening. It was, uh, voted out unanimously, okay, in favor of, uh, this legislature, and, uh, we do have to make one amendment to the, uh, the recorded, uh, legislate, legislation, um, to delete the police department, because there is no, uh, reserve list for the police department, so we have to change that, um, and wanted to make that noted, um, as well. But it has been favored, uh, voted out favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. As amended, roll call.
Shall the city council approve an act relative to the reserve time of public safety personnel in the city of Revere as amended? Counselor Janino, I'm sorry, is recused? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Dambrosio.
Yes. Counsel President, councilors, thank you very much. Two-minute recess.[1611.11] Two-minute recess. Okay, back to the regular order of business. Before we do that, I want to recognize two new councils elect. Councilor-elect Ward Three is Anthony Cordleandro. And Councilor-elect-at-large, Mark Silvestri. Now, back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Title VI of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere Relative to Non-Domesticated Animals.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Natalie Kong. I'm the Chief of Health and Human Service for the City of Revere, 50 Hall Ave. So I just wanted to, I'm sure you guys already know this, but we were hoping to amend the language in Title VI, Chapter 602, Section 60220, to be more in line with the urban farming or urban agriculture ordinance that you have all already voted into. We're hoping to keep, you know, things like chickens on resident grounds. And in order for us to move forward with building those regulations, we just need everything to kind of be more in line language-wise. So we're hoping to just amend that ordinance to allow an exception for keeping of basically just chickens. That's really the only animal we're looking for. It's the only one that seems to make sense right now. And obviously, it would be heavily regulated by the Board of Health, too.
Any, any other proponents? People in favor? Just want to raise your hand, that's fine. If you want to come up and speak, go right ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
Megan Conley, 36 Breedins Lane. I am the Food Hub Coordinator, so I am definitely in favor of this title.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Anybody just want to raise their hand? Oh, go right ahead. Step to the podium.
Hi, my name is Brittany Style, 122 Morris Street. I'm a proponent for this ordinance, of course. I'm as a farmers market manager, too. It's great to have eggs and accessible, just from chickens to feeds families, puts food on the table, and it's just great overall for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Name and address for the record.
Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street. I am a proponent for this. It is something that families have done all over. I have families in Italy have done it for a while. One of my neighbors has them behind me and is, I don't have a problem with it at all. Fresh eggs, they want to bring them to me, that's fine. My wife doesn't want them, but I'll take them. So I am definitely in favor of it with the Board of Health, and show will do a great job keeping the ordinance.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Dimple Rana, Director of Health, Community Health and Engagement for the City of Revere, 281 Broadway. I'm also a proponent, just so that we can update the language from Title VI to match the urban farming ordinance that you all passed a few months ago and making it one of the best urban farming ordinances in the state. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, city councilors? Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Dr. Kong. Are we specifically restricting chickens only, no roosters?
No roosters, only chickens.
No roosters, because I know people are caring for roosters, and I'm getting a lot of complaints. What does one do if they do get, if there is a complaint?
Please step to the podium.
We are in the middle of crafting these regulations, and within the regulations, it'll very clearly state chickens only, no roosters. You can order these chickens online and they are guaranteed to be female chickens. We aren't going to allow roosters because of the concern for noise, because roosters make a lot of noise. So yeah, we will very clearly state that so that that doesn't happen. There is, you know, folks who want to breed, obviously you will need a rooster, but we're still working through that. There are other cities that have similar regulations for the keeping of chickens in residential, you know, on residential property. And we're reaching out to them to see how they're kind of managing that. But I think for now, we might not allow breeding, just keeping of hens or female chickens, not roosters, just for the production of eggs.
Where does one complain?
Where does one complain? So we're going to have inspectional services be enforcing these, these regulations once they are written and then approved by the Board of Health, so they can lodge any complaints either in the Public Health Department or inspectional services as well.
Oh, 311.
Or 311, yeah. That's the usual mechanism.
Okay, well, I do want to say, a little sidebar, congratulations on all the work you've done in the city of Revere.
Thank you.
You've done a great job. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Any other question?
Thank you. Any, any other councils? Hearing and seeing none. We did opponents. Oh, did? Yeah, we did opponents and we did councilors. So we're good. This is going to the, the chicken committee. No, this is going to Counselor Rotundo's committee. Now, is it going to zoning? All right, we'll go to zoning.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $2,589,359 for the cost of replacing the water boiler at the Beechmont School.
Public hearing, proponents?
Good evening, Richard Vizcay, 21 Broadway, CFO. This loan order is part of the accelerated repair program of the Mass. School Building Authority. We are eligible for up to 76% reimbursement on this loan order, which would, we do have to appropriate the gross amount, but it should be a net cost of around $620,000. Anytime we can leverage grant dollars against our own money for these types of repairs, I strongly recommend it. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? People in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? Hearing and seeing none? Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $2,589,359 for the water boiler replacement at the Beechmont School? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zimbudo?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance establishing regulations for sustainable food, wear, and packaging.
This is a public hearing, proponents?
Thank you, Ralph DeChico, Revere Commission on Disabilities. Couple of things that I want to state that I said at the last meeting, that the straws need to be excluded from this. Again, it was in the journal, straws are part of this ordinance.
Well amended.
They need to be taken out. Not only not taken out, it needs to be clearly stated in here that straws are excluded. At the November 26, 2019 meeting, when this was originally brought up to this council, I had given every counselor a packet on why straws cannot be banned for the purposes of not only children with disabilities, seniors with disabilities, and other people with disabilities. Plastic straws are a necessity for people with disabilities, children with disabilities, especially children that are autistic. Plastic straws need to be available, they need to be there, and you cannot have that. Restaurants need to have them and they need to be asked for by a resident or a person that needs it because that's, that is as, that is acting as a violation and a, of their rights to have to ask for it. It's discriminatory. So you cannot have a straw on premises and they need to ask for it. So that cannot be something that is, that is banned or only used for that purpose. They cannot only, they cannot, also cannot be banned in the stores for sale because these residents need to purchase them for their family members, their seniors, or their children that are autistic. So if this is to be added as an ordinance, it needs to clearly state that straws are excluded from this. So I wanted to make that be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I think you have the wrong version. There's just a, it's just a paper glitch here. It has been removed. Okay, so that, any other proponents?
Can I, can I also state though, but even though it's removed, it has to say an exclusion?
Yes.
Thank you.
It will be put in. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Anybody opposed? Are you a proponent?
Yes.
We'll record you as a proponent, Dimple Rana.
Hello, I'm Dimple Rana, Director of Community Health and Engagement. I am a proponent of this ordinance, but I do want the City Council to consider the impacts to our local businesses, especially as they're recovering from COVID, to cover the costs of the proposed materials, as they do cost much more than the non-recyclable, non-compostable materials. And so if there is a program set up that there'd be some sort of incentive tied into this and so that restaurants and other businesses who are providing meals can afford to cover the cost of these recycled materials. The other piece is that the city currently does not have a citywide composting program, and this is something else that should be tied into the ordinance and so that, not just for our businesses, but also for our residents to have a place where we can compost. But otherwise, I am proponent of this, but just to be aware of the cost that this will inhibit a lot of businesses that are already struggling right now, recovering from COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess we'll, we'll now go to opponents again. Anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Close that side of the hearing. Councilors, Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank my colleague Counselor McKenna for putting this motion in with me. This is sentimental to me because polystyrene bans were the reason I got involved in politics to begin with. When I was at Salem State in 2010, one of the first things we did was ban these, and that was a decade ago. And, you know, for many reasons, I do respectfully disagree with some of the points that were brought up tonight because it is good and it's good for many reasons, which I'm going to share with you. So first of all, polystyrene is a plastic that's made from petrochemicals and these chemicals are a health hazard. They have neurotoxins and carcinogens that can leach into foods with different chemical reactions such as temperature, oils, or fats. They're an environmental hazard. This foam in particular is often mistaken by animals and can be eaten. It's also really hazardous when it's burned. So as these plastics are sent to our incinerator around the corner and come into our atmosphere, we're inhaling the residual aftermath of these items. They're also not recyclable. So something that people don't realize is that Massachusetts actually does not include polystyrene in their curbside recycling programs. So foam is 95% air. So if it's contaminated with food residue, you can't really recycle it. So a little bit about this, I know you guys like some facts. So as of October of 2021, 53 cities in 12 towns across Massachusetts have already done this. This is Common Language. The language is based off of Massachusetts Sierra Club, which was used as a template for these other over 60 communities in our Commonwealth that include Amherst, Andover, Brookline, Maynard, Melrose, Pittsfield, Shrewsbury, Somerville, Westfield, Westford, and Marblehead, Nantucket, so many more. So if these wealthier communities can get these biohazards and trash out of their communities, Revere should as well. Our, our community does not deserve to have that trash here. There are options. There are so many options and they're affordable options. And I do agree with some of the points that were brought up, that we do need to make sure our businesses can do this and can, can make these sustainable changes. It, it's just, it's really important that we're looking at the bigger picture here, and this is one piece in the bigger picture. I'm happy to answer more questions about it, but I do think that this is, it's a good piece of legislation for the city of Revere. It's a good ordinance. It, it focuses on making our community more conscious of some of the things that we get that we throw away and that end up here. Thank you for hearing it tonight. I, I look forward to this hopefully going to committee and then expediently being passed. In terms of composting, I couldn't agree more. We need a composting program. However, I do think it's separate from this, and I would hate that this would not pass because of the concerns that people still have around composting in an urban community when we already have the rodent issue that we have in the city of Revere. So in my opinion, I think this is great to go, then we need to work a little bit more on the rodent control and then get composting in place because that's a huge piece of the puzzle that we're missing as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know change is hard, but it's been two and a half years since we banned the plastic bags, and it's made a world of difference in our community with litter, not littering the streets, not littering the trees, not littering our beaches. We are a beach community, a coastal community, and polystyrene is a cancer-causing chemical. It causes all kinds of cancer, lung cancer, hormonal cancer. People that are pregnant, they lose their child because of it. It leaches, I just want to clarify, when you have a hot cup of coffee that is in a styrofoam cup, that, that polystyrene that's made of the styrofoam, that's in the styrofoam, which is made of petroleum, that leaches into your coffee or whatever is hot in, that you're drinking. It leaches into hot food in packaging. It's toxic to humans, and it's toxic, toxic to sea animals. What it does, it breaks down into balls and it goes into the ocean, and the animals think it's food and they swallow it. So it's not good for anything. And like I said, change is hard, but we've, we, we, the biggest thing we did as a city is we banned the plastic bags. And look at the difference that it's made. I know there was a lot of controversy in the beginning. People didn't want it, they were afraid, but, you know, they had to pay for the plastic bags, the bags. But you know what? It's made a world of difference in Revere. And I hope tonight that you can see that this is not, this is toxic. It's worse than the plastic bags. It doesn't, it doesn't break down at all. So I hope you vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very much a supporter of this, but I did want to put some reality. First of all, styrofoam, it's terrible, and I'm glad that this is going to be something that hopefully the city will want to move forward with. There is a huge, and as we all know, we all read and see the news, there's a huge supply chain issue out there. And being in, working in the hospitality industry, right now, for some restaurants, it's feast or famine. They're just going to get any takeout packaging and packaging materials they can find. You can't find pizza boxes in some places right now. It's, it's really that dire from the supply chain, just with cardboard and recycled materials. So I would just ask that if this, and I know this is going to take some time to go into effect, but maybe just take into consideration that this will, that with that supply chain disruption, that maybe this could be something towards the latter part of 2022 to go into effect. But again, we, the hospitality industry, we made a conscious decision to remove styrofoam and these types of materials years ago, before they were required. City of Boston, City of Cambridge, and City of Somerville has now since required it. So it really, it is costly, it costs a few bucks, but it's well worth it when you're reducing this stuff from the, the environment. So I'd be fully in support. Thank you.
Thank you. No other councilors? Ledger fears?
Calendar item number eight, hearing called is ordered on the application of 128 Revere Street Realty Trust, requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Revere as follows. The zoning map of the city of Revere is hereby amended by changing the zoning district designation of map block and parcels 17281-1, 17281, 17282, and 17283 from Residential B District to the General Business District.
Mr. Public hearing proponents?
I'm Victor Bonfilio, 63 Case Drive.
Paul Bonfilio, 20 Wing Road. And we're here today before this honorable body and our honorable city clerk, requesting to get a continuation of use in the zoning. Our family business, the funeral home, has been located at Revere Street for many, many years. My great-grandmother started our funeral service back in 1911, and now here we are four generations later, and it's my brother and myself, and hopefully our children will continue it on for one more generation. The main reason we're here tonight looking for this zoning change is that we see is that we see the ever-changing types of requests that are happening in our industry. And we realize that in another five, or 10, or 15 years from now, we may need to have a totally different type of facility at the funeral home. And we want to just be in a position that we can go ahead and automatically do that by right. We've had that, like I said, that property has been in our family for many, many years. And we seek your support and approval for this zoning continuation of use.
Thank you. Any other proponents? People in favor? Hearing and seeing none. We're going to close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none. We're going to close that side of the hearing. Counselor.
Mr. President.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, this happens to be in Ward 3, and I'm very proud to say that the Bonfilio family are friends of mine and are friends of many residents of our community. They have asked for nothing over the past several years. I've represented this particular area for 34 years, and the Bonfilio family have asked for nothing. And I think that in justification for this particular request, I think it ought to be granted based on the fact that when they're going to build something or add something to their property, they're going to do it first class, and they're going to do it the right way. And it's going to be beneficial to the whole community. Bearing in mind, we don't want to be there too soon, but eventually, that's our place to be. And so we want to make certain that the facility is there and available to our community. Now, I know my daughter happens to live in Linfield. And lo and behold, this gentleman lives in Linfield, too. They don't have a funeral parlor in Linfield. That's disgraceful. You've got to go to Wakefield. You've got to go elsewhere to have a funeral. And so I'm all for this, and I think that whatever you do or whatever you have in mind, I think you ought to have the right to just go forward and do it, and do it in first-class order, that I know you will. So I would be supportive of this.
Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo the comments of my colleague to my left. It's not easy in this day and age to own a small family business, and it's not easy to own one for as many years as you guys have and have the reputation that you have. I think it's important that we continue to support that business and give you the tools that you need to make it a generational business and to make sure that your kids and grandkids can have a legacy that your dad started. So absolutely in support, and I wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. That business, while it may be in Ward 3, it's directly across the street from the ward. I represent Ward 5. And I don't know what this city would do without that location there. So many families have been through that process, myself included. And I think not to grant this would be being a disservice to the residents of the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? I'll just, no, this has to go to zoning. I'll just state that I am 100% in support of this. I mean, the Bonfilio family is legendary, and as Paul said, four generations, and probably going to go to six. So I will be in support of this when it comes out of zoning. So it's going to zoning. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
Back to the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Vice President Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we continue on with the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report this evening, we already took care of number nine. Calendar order number 10 through 16 have been placed on file. Is that correct? And that ends the Subcommittee Report.
Thank you for your report.
Next up is the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Counselor, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, the Chairman of Appointments Subcommittee is proud to present this evening the following appointees and reappointees to this committee. Appointment of Jan Dumis to Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That was voted out favorably by the Appointments Subcommittee. 21-340, reappointment of John Dove to the Library Board. That was voted out favorably also. 21-341, reappointment of Mark Ferranti to the Library Board. That was voted out favorably. 21-342, reappointment of Frank Scatino to the Library Board. That was voted out favorably. 21-343, reappointment of Nancy Spontinado to the Library Board. That was voted out favorably. And finally, 21-357, appointment of Feeny Brothers as a licensed drain layer. That was voted out favorably. Mr. President, if there are no objections, I ask that they all be taken as one, as most of, all of the council members were present during this process and as if they were voted out favorably. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo. Is absent. Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Next up is the Zoning Subcommittee Report. Calendar item number 23.
Chairman Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had one piece of business in front of us, and that was voted on unanimously with the, as well as the findings that were submitted with it, conditions and findings by Attorney Simeoni and by the Site Plan Review. So I would request that we vote on that this evening.
Madam Clerk. Bless you.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner through a planned unit development to convert the existing office building into 12 apartment units subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review? This is at 333 Libra Bank Highway. Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti. Yes, and Vice Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. In accordance with Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following council orders will be placed on file. Did you want to?
Move they all be placed on file.
All favor, opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number 41. Communication from Attorney Evan James Palavas requesting that the City Council accept the donation of land for open space and conservation purposes for map block parcel 4-90-002, Revere Beach Parkway, presently owned by Mr. Paul Ferragamo.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Attorney Evan Palavas from New York Terrace Lynn, Massachusetts. I represent Mr. Paul Ferragamo. Thank you.
Tell us what you're trying to do here.
Well, Mr. Ferragamo owns a piece of property located, parcel ID number 004-90-002, on Revere Beach Parkway. It is a vacant lot at this point in time. We were, he entertained some offers from the Butters for purchase of it, but he decided that it would be better for the environment and for the city of Revere if he offered it to the city of Revere for open space, green space. We've gone through the process. On Wednesday, May 5 of this year, the Conservation Committee approved the proposed donation. And last week, I was notified that it would be before the honorable board tonight. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Counselor McKenna.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Ferragamo for the generous donation of the open space. And I hope it stays that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, actually, I have a problem with this, believe it or not. This cannot be used for open space. It's a long sales creek. And there are tree, it's a total tree forest in there. And we've had many trees fall on people's property from Mr. Ferragamo's, from this property, and damaging fencing over the last several storms. And, you know, I got complaints from my folks, you know, who live there, who, and this will be in Counselor McKenna's ward next time. No, don't be sorry. Don't be sorry at all. But, you know, I would say before we accept it, that this property be cleaned up, and all the dead branches and the debris and everything that's in there be taken out before we accept it. You know, it's a disgrace right now.
I have not seen, personally seen it, though.
Somebody should go down there and look at it.
You know, with all due respect.
I'm sorry, I can't see you nailing it. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Novoselfsky. It's gone before the Conservation Committee. I mean, Mr., you know, and they've reviewed this and they voted on it. I'm not here to be argumentative with you, sir.
I understand.
You know, but it is an open piece of property that we'd like to donate to the city.
It's not a clean piece of property. I may say that. You know, so why should we accept it and having to clean it up ourselves? And we should not accept it this way. It should be in a better condition. You know, so, you know, I know exactly where it is. And, you know, I have a problem with this. You know, it's nice that you want to donate it and get it off your tax rolls and make it somebody else's problem. But before it becomes our problem, I want it straightened out. So I will not vote for this. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Novoselfsky, yeah, no. Counselor Rotundo. I forgot his name. I forgot his name.
Somebody to check, somebody to check your pulse. But that said, as I'm referring with my counsel.
Speak it to the microphone, will you?
Twice in one night. I feel like Rodney Dangerfield. After looking at the map that Counsel Serino put up on GIS, I have to confer, you know, with Counsel Novoselfsky that clearly this area needs to be cleaned up and remediated before we accept it. I mean, I know the area quite well. There's a lot of issues with that area. Thank you.
Well, the only thing that I can say, if I may, is that trees fall all the time. So, and, thank you. Trees fall all the time.
So this is a piece of land that Conservation Commission approved, and we're going to set some new precedent here tonight. So I'm going to place this in.
But shopping cart stone.
What's that?
But shopping cart stone.
Ways and Means.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 42. Communication from the City Auditor relative to the parity salary ordinance.
Public hearing.
Calendar item number 43. Communication from the Chairman of the Board of Assessors requesting that the City Council hold a public hearing for the purpose of establishing the minimum residential factor for adoption of the fiscal year 2022 tax rate.
I want to do a public hearing.
Motions. Calendar item number 45. Motion presented by Counselor Janino that the Revere City Council proclaim November 8, 2021, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day.
Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was not aware that this was an advocacy day, but I learned about it through a group up at the State House, and I thought it was a worthy cause. I know many people in the community that we've lost to pancreatic cancer. And the thing about pancreatic cancer is it's one of those cancers that, when they happen, they happen very, very quickly. Often, once you're diagnosed, you only have several months to make some really important life decisions. And it's a type of cancer that we really need to bring a little bit more awareness to. It's one of the deadliest cancers. And 48,220 people are estimated to be diagnosed with this every year in the United States. It's just as common in men as it is in women. And it is the third-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, only second to lung and colon cancer. So I just think it's important that we bring awareness to it, to the people that are going through this now, and to honor the people that we've lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 46. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor be requested to have the Inclusionary Committee provide an update to the City Council on a weekly basis. Furthermore, that the committee provide the City Council Furthermore, that the committee provide the City Council with a copy of any polls they are using to gather community input.
Counselor Rotundo.
Speaks for itself.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 47, motion presented by Council, Council President Zambudo that the City Council order to a public hearing and ordinance repealing section 2.03.050E of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere.
Counselor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is the meeting times ordinance that would, we would be repealing to not have meetings begin at 5:00, and I have to say, I mean, I would save my comments for the public hearing, but I am vehemently against repealing this ordinance.
Yeah, I asked you to, to sit and find out the information that prompted this, and hopefully you will do that before the public hearing.
Well, I, I mean, I, I will.
I know, and I just want you to keep an open mind.
I mean, I, I will, with all due respect, but I think that if, you know, if we have to have meetings, especially during, as we get closer to the end of session, on, you know, a second night of the week or, or what have you, I, I just, I feel strongly that we need to get this on the.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, we're ordering this to a public hearing on the 22nd of November.
Calendar item number 48, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the City Council create an Inclusionary Zoning and Affordable Housing Subcommittee.
Counselor Rotundo.
Speaks for itself.
Zoning.
Calendar item number 49, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the City Council award a certificate of appreciation to WBZ reporter and Revere resident Cheryl Fieendaga for her diligence and reporting on the removal of parking meters on Revere Beach. Without her coverage, the meters would have never been removed.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll save my comments for that night.
Okay, I want to give some credit to Representative Turco and Representative Janino. Okay, on, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed? Did you want to speak? Yeah, and I apologize. I have to be more careful of the, the different, the balancing act here.
Calendar item number 50, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor request the Board of Health and the License Commission to take the necessary actions to ban the sale of NIPs from all establishments in the city of Revere effective as soon as possible.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I didn't think this would be so controversial, but I've received numerous phone calls from my constituents in the Shirley Ave area complaining about the number of empty NIP bottles on the streets, in the Elks parking lot, and I had one business owner actually call me and say, "Ira, I had 35 empty NIP bottles on, in front of my door, my business, what, on, on, over the weekend." Now, the only way I, I see that we can stop NIPs from being thrown all over the place, NIP bottles, is to ban them in the city of Revere. We wouldn't be the only ones to do this. Other cities and towns have done this, to protect the cleanliness of the city and the neighborhoods. Now, I'm not, I'm sure not Shirley Ave is the only area that has it. NIPs are being sold all over the city of Revere, but this is the problem I have, and if you don't do this, something has to be done to stop this disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Ira, as my ward counselor, I concur with you, that is an issue. I can tell you on a daily basis that I pick up between 10 and 15 NIPs a day. I believe that there might be a better solution in this. My suggestion would be is to attach a 10-cent fee to the NIP bottle itself. We know who's drinking these NIPs. Unfortunately, these are mostly homeless people who are, have issues with alcohol, and the incentive process of having them pick up the NIP bottles and saving them and returning them for NIPs is probably more advantageous than hurting the people that actually sell them. That's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselor Janino and I put this in two, two and a half years ago, and we wanted to put a, put it in the bottle bill, five cent deposit. And I think the House of, I'm not really sure, can you speak on this? No, she can't. All right. But anyways, there's, there's a lot of solutions. I just would hate to put the little guy out, you know? I would hate to hurt the little guy. And I know that Chelsea did it a couple of years ago, and all those businesses that they took the NIPs away from, they were folded during COVID. So I think, I don't want to hurt the little guy. I think there is a solution. I like Counselor Rotundo's, you know, conversation about putting a 10-cent, 10 cents on the NIP, but I think there's a better solution. I think we need to advocate the legislation and see if they can do a bottle bill and put a 5 cents, you know, deposit on it, so people will give it back, and we won't see it in the street. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I understand where Counselor Novoselsky is coming from, and I know that their littering bothers me. You know, you see scratch tickets, cigarette butts, NIPs, you name it. I look for alternatives, you know, rather than banning this product, and I think that a deposit might be something that would be a good alternative, maybe something that we could even gear towards coming back directly to the city. I don't know if necessar, I, I don't think, I can, I can't remember the last time I ever purchased a NIP, so I'm not certain, certainly not the NIP advocate here, but I don't know if that's going to solve the littering problem by banning them. So I don't think I'd be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple points of clarification to my colleagues. What Counselor McKenna was referring to was the bottle bill, which is being worked on at the state level. And if NIPs were included in the bottle bill, it would provide further incentive for people to recycle them, and it would also make incentive for people that go around and pick up bottles and pick up cans to want to pick them up because they would get, you know, 5 cents or 10 cents back by picking them up and cleaning them up. So there's more incentive there. There's a couple of different things I, I have concerns regarding this. One of them that makes this different than other environmental bans is this is a restriction on a liquor license. So it's a little bit different because these are people that have liquor licenses, and you're creating a new restriction on that sale. So if you go down the road of NIPs, then you talk about, okay, it's a single serving item. So are you going to ban NIPs in single beer cans from liquor stores or any single serve alcoholic beverage? So I think there's a bigger conversation there, that if you're going to restrict that one item, you kind of open up a can of worms on those liquor license restrictions. Also, I think the state is doing a lot of work on this, so this is one of those cases that I do think we'll, we'll have a solution from the state sooner rather than later that will help all of our communities. And in Chelsea, it was a little different. Chelsea had a really bad use issue, where people were drinking in the streets in Chelsea, there was a homelessness issue. So this was not, in Chelsea, a litter issue rather than a consumption issue. So a couple of differences there, but I do think it's worth a conversation, and I think that there's a lot more discussion to be had, but this is one case where the state is doing a lot of work on incentivizing recycling in general and, and talking about the bigger picture of this. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, in talking to some people in the industry, they're saying this conversation being had, are going to be had at the State House in reference to similar, to the bottle bill in reference where they're going to put a tax on the, on these NIPs. They understand fully that the litter problem that's occurring, as I have on the media strip at Patriot Parkway, and I've spoken for, for years on that, and I had, I had a special request made to the DPW to go down and clean it on a weekly basis, that's how much was being disposed of there. But I think that the, the bottom line is that this ought to go for more conversation, go to, go to a subcommittee, and, and the one who has the last say on it is the Revere License Commission. So we can make an advancement on this and have conversation in subcommittee, but, and we can review that, make a determination, and give our thoughts to the License Commission for their determination. But I think also it's one that I'm not for it, I'm not against it, I don't buy NIPs, but I know a lot of folks that do, and a lot of, as was mentioned, a lot of the smaller proprietors have these for sale, and I can name maybe 10 right in that area, that I don't want to hurt the business any more than they have been hurt, and they're being limited, but so many sanctions placed upon them, no plastic bags, no straws, no this, no that. And, you know, the business community is being whacked so hard, they're saying, oh, what's going on here? And, and one hand, you're telling me we're going to help you, and the other hand, they're going to say, we're going to wipe out everything. So let's be a little bit mindful of the business community, but also be mindful, let's get together, before we make a quick determination on this, talk about it in conversation, and all good things happen when you talk about something. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Vice President Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with my fellow counselors on this. I'm not sure banning the, the sale of NIPs is the solution. I really don't. I understand the littering problem that we have in the city, but we also, I, I see scratch tickets all over the place. Are we going to ban scratch tickets as well? I, I don't see that happening anytime soon. So not that I'm a fa, a big fan of NIPs, I don't think, if I'm going to buy something, I'm going to buy the big bottle, not the little one. All right? With that being said, I think there are other avenues that we can go with than banning these NIPs and hurting our, our, our businesses in this community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like my colleagues, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I, I tend to agree that, you know, obviously, NIPs, actually, if Revere TV can kind of zoom in on this photo, back in August, we had a cleanup in North Revere, and these were all the NIPs that were along Salem Street. So there were, God, I would say a couple hundred through the day. But I don't think banning the NIPs is necessarily the answer. I think having a bottle deposit, because, I mean, we actually would have got a lot of money for those, all those NIPs had there been a deposit. So hopefully, we can see some action at the state level and defer to the state on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I want to thank everybody for their, their input. You know, this was done in frustration, and, and also frustration by my folks down up Shirley Avenue. And I'm glad I opened up something that we can have conversation on. And, you know, I, I hope we can solve something, find a solution for it, and hopefully correct a ill that's, that's going on. You know, again, I don't want to hurt anybody either, but sometimes, you know, when your own house is being damaged, you want to react. And, you know, this is what, you know, this is what I'm doing. So, but I thank everybody for their input and, and their attempt to help correct this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, come on up. Counselor-elect.
Good evening, Counsel Anthony Cogliandro, 105 Newman Street. You got a lot of, a lot of the counselors up here took the words right out of my mouth. We really need to get away from one-off bins. That is not the solution, because we don't have a NIP problem, we have a littering problem. Okay, and I heard scratch tickets, I heard cigarettes mentioned. So, you know, if we were banning things that were causing a lot of litter, we would have to ban Dunkin' Donuts from Surfing Coffee, because I pick those cups up every day in front of my school, and that would cause chaos, so we can't do that.
McDonald's, too.
What's that?
McDonald's.
Well, I don't go to McDonald's, just like Counselor Visconti doesn't buy a NIP, he buys the little bottles. But, you know, NIPs are 10 to 15% of the revenue for liquor stores. We can't take that away, and as a small business owner, I, I would not want to hurt other business owners, and I, and I know that, that was mentioned here tonight, but that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ways and Means. Oh, I'm sorry, we got to read a couple of record, letters into the record first.
One is from Dan Rizzo, Counselor-at-Large-Elect. I'm writing this letter in response to Council Motion 21 dash 391. This is yet another hardship thrust upon the business community of our city. If the goal here is to eliminate the sale of NIPs for reasons of cleanliness, I suggest that inspectional services keep a close eye on establishments that are not keeping their areas clean. I would suggest most are. Furthermore, if you refuse people the ability to buy smaller quantities of alcohol, you're forcing them to buy larger quantities, half pints and pints or greater, which is not necessarily an overall great idea for those limiting their consumption. It is time that the city thinks about ways to help the businesses of our community rather than add further in a more arduous regulations and conditions. And there's also another letter on here from Woody's Liquor is also in opposition to the motion.
Ways and Means. We stand adjourned until November 15.